Yeah, you have anything to say or you just want us to?
Yeah.
Just very happy to be moving up to the town accountant. It's been a great four and a half years here, so just really happy.
Good. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think we need to congratulate you on being one of eight in the Commonwealth to receive your municipal accounting certification.
Thank you.
Amazing, and I knew it took a lot of work to get there, and we're just so proud of you.
Oh, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, so entertain a motion. Well, I'll do it. This is a motion to promote to town accountant full-time beginning July 5th, 2024.
July 1st?
July 1st?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you said 5th, sorry.
July 1st, 2024. The rate of pay is $31.50 an hour, grade nine, step five, for up to 28 hours per week.
So moved.
Any other discussion?
You need a second?
Yes, second.
Oh, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Leave that painless for you. Wait a minute, you also?
We have something for you.
Let me just leave this in here for you later.
I have them, so yeah, leave it in their spine.
Okay.
I have originals.
I have David.
So you want to read it?
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations.
So this is a certificate on her achievement, and we just want to let you know how special you are and how necessary it is to have an accountant.
Yeah.
Thanks, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's a very competitive marketplace, and we are so lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Good job, Erin.
Good job, Erin. Well done. Okay, just so we can keep moving, I am gonna, Karen here.
Oh, hey.
Yeah. We're gonna be moving Dan Studley, who's a part-time operator right now, up to a full-time as assistant chief wastewater operator.
Hi, Karen Boudreaux, sewer commission, and before I make the vote from the sewer commission meeting on June 17th, I would like to give major kudos out to Erin. She has been a significant player in getting all the accounting reports to us, both in PDF and Excel, and we've been able to really analyze things like never before because of all her hard work, so way to go. I'm here tonight, June 17th, we had a sewer commission meeting, and we voted to reclassify Dan Studley, our part-time operator from grade seven, step six, to assistant chief, our new position, grade 10, step one, and this now brings us compliant with both our federal and state permits. We still will be hiring for part-time because our engineers have said we really need to be at 2.5 to do the projects that we've got in front of us, but we are now compliant.
Yay! Another congratulations.
And Isaac gets to go home at night.
Yay!
That's even better, so.
That's awesome.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Just good job. Thanks for getting us, to you and the sewer commission, to getting us to this point.
It's been, I'd like it to happen in three or four months. It's been two years, and you know, it is what it is, but we're getting there.
So I'll motion to officially promote to assistant wastewater operator?
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief.
I think the title is assistant wastewater superintendent.
Yeah, and the small one's chief and superintendent, I used interchange if I thought.
Superintendent. The rate is $31.42 an hour, grade 10, step 1.
Second.
Okay, any other comments?
July 1st.
July, as of July 1st.
As of July 1st, sorry, as of July 1st.
We're just getting warmed up.
I keep looking at the length of stuff and I'm...
Keep going.
Yeah.
We're good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Right, thank you.
Yay, another yay.
Okay, well, is Todd Zernick here?
He, oh, he is here. He's not in the back, I didn't see him first. Another yay. Hey, Todd.
Hi, Laura.
Hi, Cameron.
Yeah, you wanna say something?
Oh, introducing?
Yeah.
Todd has been our diligent captain as well as non-full-time, full-timer for the last almost four years, basically holding with our department, hoping for the growth that we've had, which he has been an integral part of, to finally succeed into his current hopeful position pending your approval, where he will potentially get benefits and have a way of retiring and securing this as his full-time employer that he's been so diligently working for for the last four years. So I'm very proud to be able to have had him, A, stand by while we solidified this, and B, be able to present him for this move into his new full-time career.
Anybody else have anything to?
No, I'm just going to say I know Todd's been an essential part of the EMS team.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate your contributions, as well as the strong relationship between Irving and Northfield, too. I think he really helped solidify that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard good, but haven't heard any bad things about you. I'll keep it that way. No, I've heard good things, and you know, our paramedics are, you know, very, very well respected in this area.
We work hard at that.
Yeah.
For sure.
So I'll motion to promote to full-time paramedic Todd Zernick. The pay rate is $28.82 an hour, grade nine, step one. Able to start July 1st, 2024 upon completion of all necessary documents. Second. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yay!
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow. Excellent.
Should we, we're running ahead.
Well, I think this next one's gonna, might take a...
Take a little while, okay. Now, bring up Tom Walker if you're all set, Tom?
I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm here to just go over some of the projects that we got started coming up, hopefully. Weather pending on everything we bring up. Couple of things that I think we have to address, and number one is the water line on Pearson Road. I know a lot of things are still in limbo, but they've had three breaks just this week. Or last week, I guess I should say, they've been there every other day. And the road is in serious condition where it needs to be paved, but I don't want to pave the road. It was supposed to be paved five years ago, and we've been kind of back and forth on this water line because I don't want to do a nice new road and then have this water situation. Now, I know Sunday night they were there, and according to the water department that was there, they were headed back to make a suggestion this gets taken care of, but I think we should try to send a letter of support about the situation. That it's, you know, that we need to get the road paved and repaired. It's getting to a point where I was just gonna resurface it, but because we put it off for so long, if it goes another two or three years, it's gonna be a complete rebuild. So you're gonna go from, say, $60,000 to probably $100,000 or better. They know they have a problem, they know, and I know all the water, the whole thing's up in the air still, and that's been their, their problem for a while, and their holdups. But I think it's getting to a point where they kind of need to do something. And I know we've, we have the same situation on Glenwood, and at one time the sewer was gonna work with them because we were gonna upgrade the sewer at the same time they did the water. But since then, we've, I think, changed directions just a little on the sewer there, that we might just do sewer lining, so we won't be doing any type of, other than maybe put a manhole in. We won't be digging the whole road up like was kind of planned. But that water main, it broke this winter, and I mean, it went two months before I finally said you gotta fix it because they were destroying the rest of the road. So I don't know if we can just incorporate a general letter to them, and you know...
Expressing concern?
Concern about the situations we have.
And a desire to get it?
Correct.
Get it fixed, yeah.
Correct.
When, when we're expressing concern and we're mentioning those two areas, are there any other areas that we should include in that letter?
There's no other areas that have, they're getting constant breaks or anything. I know he discussed with me that I guess in some of the paperwork they did for a grant, I think one of them was the ridge or something, he did bring up that Pearson Road was on the list, and Myrtle Street because of the, but it had, I think they were just doing it to upgrade because they don't have any pressure up there. They've had minimal breaks up there in the past four or five years. The big ones are, I mean, Pearson Road, it blows, they put a patch in it, and then they go down the road 50 feet, they put another patch in it. Like I said, there's three of them in there right now, just from Tuesday last week to Sunday night. And I know Sunday night they worked on until 2:00 in the morning just to get the water service back. By the time it broke, it like 6:00 or something, and they had to find contractors and everything else, so. They might help the water company over there to go in to their people as well if there's a concern from here, I think that will help out a little bit. On the same thing up there, and I don't know what the situation is, and I haven't got any answers. I've talked to a couple of people at the campground, they were in the, down the street. They were told they had to leave, not restrict the water that comes out of the drain and off the road. It's been there for as long as I've lived in Northfield, so. And they went in, they put a pipe, I think it's six inches, and they, they, when I gave them the road cut permit, I put on the permit that they could not restrict the water because it drains down around the edge of the field and down into the lower fields. The other night it was right to the top of Pearson Road when we had one of the big rains on Friday night. It finally goes down, but I don't know how we're gonna, it was in there, I have tried to address it with a couple people, and I don't get any callbacks. There's a ditch that's like five feet wide there, and so now they've restricted it to a six-inch pipe. And it's a regular rain, it comes up and it goes down, and it kind of sinks in the ground, and it, you know, it handles itself, but when you get the, I think we got almost two inches of rain in less than an hour the other night up there, and I mean, the drain was overflowing, and it pushes it back up, and it starts flooding off the other way that where it's not supposed to run. So I just want everybody to be aware here that I was waiting for some phone calls, hopefully we can...
Who do you, who do you need to contact for that?
Well, Steve Wiggins was the contractor that installed it. And I haven't seen him, to talk to him about it.
Is the town hall anybody in here?
No, it was Chris and Arnold. I mean, I don't, I don't know if this is temporary till they get all their work done, how it's working. It was, the drainage ditch comes around, it's put here, when I gave them the curb cut, the road was staying in the original place. But I don't know if they could get some of their equipment in, so they filled this in with gravel, and then came back and put a pipe in it, because they're kind of going in on this side of the ditch now. Which if some of these potential cabins go in, they're gonna, if the road is staying where it is now, it won't change the curb cut because it's less than 50 feet where they moved it. But they're gonna restrict it to put to each one of these cabins because they're gonna have to fill in to have a driveway to each one of the cabins to cross this ditch. You can't just drive through it with a car, so I don't know if that's what their plan is or not.
Would they be able to go, what, the bigger pipe?
They should have to, yeah, I mean, our pipe is 15 inches, it crosses the road. Like I said, that was running full bore the other night when I went down there.
I know they've changed the site plan up there a few times.
Right, and then before, in the, in the site plan that I originally gave them, the building, the curb cut permit on, the road was staying where it originally was. Like I said, I don't know if they put it over there, if it's just temporary, I'm trying to find that out. If it's temporary, a lot of people do that when they build a house to get the bigger equipment that they need to in because they can't make the swings in with things, you know, weld trucks, anything they're bringing in. I just wanted you to be aware of.
Okay.
Did you talk to the building inspector?
Yeah, he just said they, that's really not his, because I gave him the permit. And I was just, I know I've talked to Alex, I didn't know if you had Andrea and all about the culvert on Highland Ave. I mean, I know there's progress, he wanted to have a meeting, and I know there's been, what with the holidays and everything, because he did, when I talked to him a couple weeks ago, he was hoping within a couple weeks to have a meeting to go over the plan for at least the culvert part of the job. So I was just checking on him.
I haven't heard from him since then. Yeah, he's, they came out, they did their site work and all that, but then they go back and they actually do the design, so we're waiting now to meet on the design, the first phase of the design.
And then they were gonna do the, start the sidewalks afterwards, which I think they're actually starting now.
They've been, I think they've been scoping and marking, so yeah.
And then I didn't know on the, if there was any movement, because I haven't heard anything on the school street bridge.
The only thing is, that's a holdup at Mast DOT because they're supposed, well, they're supposed to assign us, the engineer. And we've asked them to assign our engineer, but they haven't come back and confirmed that. In fact, we got an email, what was it, a week, a couple weeks ago, saying, oh yeah, hold up on our end, yeah, we've got some snafu. So as soon as they assign the engineer, that project will move forward, so we're just, we're waiting on the state.
They have a few residents that call.
Yeah, we're waiting on the state. As soon as they assign the engineer, we'll work with them for the design.
Okay.
When you say our engineer, you mean somebody who's already working in the town on other projects?
Well, Ty and Bond did, helped us with the grant application.
Oh, okay.
And they are certified to take this. I mean, the state can assign various ones, so they are in the pool. We don't know if we'll get them, but we've asked, since they did the preliminary work, could we have the people who did that? But we don't have any say, they technically, in the small bridge grant engineering phase, assign the engineer because they pay them, so.
And as for just projects for the summer that we've got lined up so far, there's two paving jobs that were gonna happen, Pine Meadow Road, we're gonna level that from Route 63 to the railroad tracks. Depending, now that we have the, the new bids are out as of July 1st, we can kind of, if, I got Chapter 90 money, if we can go to the other side of the railroad tracks and go a little further, we're gonna go as far as we can go for what I get approved for the Chapter 90 on the road. And then we're gonna go out and start Warwick Road from Burnham Road to approximately about a mile or so to where School Street comes back out onto Warwick Road. We just gotta do a little brushwork in the edge, kind of clean the edges and inspect all the drainage, and then they're gonna come in and pave there this summer. And then we have the big pipe job, which we just started actually today down on Pine Meadow Road, where the drainage discharges out back into the ravine, and the pipe's all broken, collapsed. It has been, well, we've been discussing it for the 20, some odd years I've been here, so. We did start it today, but it's 500 feet of three foot, three-foot pipe, so.
Where on Pine Meadow?
It's actually, discharges out behind a residence house down just before you get to Riverview Drive.
Oh, okay.
It's out, it comes down...
Right after the curve?
It comes all through the curves, all our drainage comes down there, and then there's a big ravine out in the residence yard. And that was some of the holdup over the years. They had sheds, they had trees, they had everything. We didn't know if we had access to the yard, and now it's under, got a new resident. We worked and got a form for them to fill out and to allow us to go in and change it. So we did start down there today, and it's gonna be a little while. We've got other things going on as well as roadside mowing and everything now, too. So.
Are you changing the size of that pipe? You said that's a three-foot?
We're putting a three-foot, and it was only two foot there. And we've been back and forth because the price of pipe went up so bad, that's been another huge holdup. I mean, the pipe alone's like $36,000. And the plastic pipe was gonna cost us about $42,000, so we ended up going with a concrete pipe, which is actually better. So if somebody drives in the backyard, the problem we have is we don't have a lot of depth, so there isn't a lot of cover, and the different pipes need a certain amount, that's what creates the crush pressure on them. And with plastic pipe, in a few places, because the yard is kind of like this, it was gonna be pretty close to being at the surface going with the bigger pipe. But with the cement pipe, we can lay it a little leveller for one as well, but it also has the crush point, if he drives a tractor or car, I mean, you're obviously not gonna drive a big truck out there, and it's kind of off the side anyways, but he does a lot of mowing with a small tractor and whatnot and out there, so. And then, other than that, general maintenance we have, and then we have, I know some people have been calling because we've paved a bunch of roads, we're gonna, we have to rent the machine, and I'm trying to get to a point where we can rent the machine for a week or two to edge the roads, put gravel or lawn by people's lawns. We were trying to get caught up on tree work and everything these past couple weeks. So after the first of the year, that's another, it's on, it's on the list. So hopefully, once we get caught up on the roadside mowing and everything, we're pretty well caught up for now. Other than we are in August, I've been talking with the contractor about cleaning up all the mess on Gulf Road, and that he thinks he can, he's been up and relocked out, he thinks he can do it in a week, so, but we're gonna, we're gonna work it before school comes back, so we don't have to fight with the buses, you know, letting the buses through. But we're gonna close Gulf Road during the day while we work, and then open it at night. And so it's gonna be, you know, we'll get up our signs, we're trying to come up with a date when I have all my help, that they're not vacationing or whatever, so we can all be there to, to work with the contractor.
Okay. When do you, so you don't have a target at this point, just sometime this...
Right around the middle of August is what we've been shooting for. We're just trying to firm it up with him, because he had a couple jobs, he's trying to get cleaned up with the machine that he has, that he needs to come up there with to pull the trees up out of the ravine and everything.
Did you have more trees come down with the last, we had a couple of storms there recently?
We had a few, but we, actually, there were more. We had some down on Pine Meadow Road this past couple weeks.
Oh, okay.
There's like a swath went through the center of town here, we had one on Warwick Road.
There was one on Main Street, wasn't there?
That Main Street, but that was state, and then we had one yesterday going on Burnham Road. Actually, I don't know, it was in the middle there where there's no wire, so. So that's what the plan for this summer is to, and by then, summer will be shot.
It'll be time for winter.
Much accomplished, right? So you're asking for a letter from the select board to the East Northfield Water Company regarding those spots? And for intervention on the campground road cut or specification, whether that's a temporary thing or just kind of clarification?
Yeah, so we have something in writing at least that we've notified them, possibly that's what I'm asking for.
And then the culvert on Highland Ave, we went through it, no, no shade, I just was trying to keep up. So the culvert on Highland Ave, that ETA on that is when? That's a meeting with the engineer?
We have to get all the engineer stuff done, and then they have to go to the conservation commission.
Yeah, they'll permit this year, they, construction won't be till next...
I think they want to get everything squared away and then...
They'll bid in the winter.
And then go out in the spring, have it shovel ready for a spring project.
It's nice to bid late winter, early spring, that's when you get your best responses.
And then the last question, the Highland Ave sidewalks, you said were in progress, what is an ETA on those?
I, that I don't know, because that's gonna, they're gonna, I mean, they can stop where the culvert's going. It's, it's, I mean, some contractors, if the same contractor's doing everything, they could work doing the culvert, doing the sidewalks, because they're gonna, if not, they're gonna have to stop for a span of, I think it's 50 or 75 feet. So if we have a contractor come in and they get both sides done, they'll have to come back and do the, over the cul, over where the culvert is. Got to go in because that's going right under the sidewalks.
So I think the plan is to, because it's just two different funding sources. The plan is to do the engineering, which was what he's saying, we're starting now. The idea would be, I think, to bid those two projects together and do them with one contractor would be the most cost-effective way to do it.
So basically, a spring, it would be spring again when that probably came through.
Because it all has to get permitted.
Yeah.
So you want us to write letters?
No, that's already in play, I was just giving it, I was just looking for...
Just a little.
Yeah, that, I didn't know if Andrea, because we've been back and forth on stuff, so I wasn't sure if they're, she had inquiry. Usually Alex is good about the correspondence between emails and stuff, and I know he did tell me, it was probably three weeks ago, he was hoping to have a meeting.
I'll poke him on where they are in the engineering.
Yeah, and I said, it's fine, I mean, we're busy anyways.
If you need anything, come us, let us know. Okay.
Yep.
Did you already send a letter regarding the campground?
He's been contacting them.
I've tried contacting them.
But I can...
But as you handed out the permit, I'm just wondering if it...
A while ago, they asked for a permit, and they had everything, but on the back of the permit, I did write that they can't restrict the water in any way.
No, I get that, I'm just wondering if, because I know you like to do personal contact, if it makes sense to...
Well, and I don't mind if...
Do a written follow-up as well, yeah.
I'll pull the curb cut permit, I get a copy of it, and I'll reach out to them. I can reach out to them and say, hey, we've had this concern, just looking at the permit, it says, don't disturb the water. What's going on? Is this permanent? Is this temporary? Like, I'll, I'll, I can email them, I have email.
Okay.
Because I've been CC'd on...
As long as we follow up.
I get CC'd on, on their stuff when they're, I don't respond, but they're doing, you know, border health or conservation question, I get CC'd on it, so I have all their contact information. I can, I can send out an email and ask those questions, if, even if you've contacted them, just give them a nudge to respond to you.
What about building maintenance? Is that on your list, too? I mean, do you have...
I can definitely move forward with it, though.
So is the bathroom, like the women's room in the town hall, the...
Well, we didn't get the grant or anything for that.
No, we did put in another grant to do just the, that we originally wanted to move some things around and do some other work to make that bathroom repellent, but we, but we did put in again for the actual physical work that needs to be done, but some of that is predicated on fixing that leak. Because if we don't want to do all that work, I mean, I urge you gentlemen who haven't been in there, when there's no one there to take a look, the wall's coming down. I mean, we're literally got white powder, like it's, it's bad, and so we've tried a couple of times, we'll see if we get this grant. If we don't, I mean, it's an article for Town Media next year, we have to fix it. But the problem is, it's water coming in every time it rains.
We're gonna come over at some point when we get slower up load, we gotta dig the old cocking out. That's where we found the problem before, was in the corner of the building, it pawns on the top of the step, and it runs... Ponds on the top of the step and it runs over to, if you were walking up the steps to the left-hand side.
Yeah.
And then eventually it makes its way down in and follows the pipes or whatever, but we did. At one time after running a guard hose for two days, found that's where it was.
Okay.
But I remember when we did the caulking as well, it was starting to get cooler in the fall when we finally found where it was leaking.
So it contracted?
Yeah, well, we're thinking that's what happened, so I wanna dig all the old. Caulking out and clean it, but it's one of the, it's it's another one of those things that's gonna have to be done on like a Friday or Saturday.
Yeah.
Because there's several places that you gotta do across where everybody's gonna walk. So that we can close the steps down for like the weekend, so the caulking sets will be dry for Monday morning.
Right, and we can't really do the the repairs until we do that, because otherwise we'll repair it and then the water.
I'm just worried about mold, I mean, that's, that's invasive.
I wouldn't look up behind the ceiling, but it's, it's, it's very bad and it's.
And we've been, other than that, we've been trying to run over, we've been in conjunction with the AC that got done last week.
Finished today.
Uh, yeah, he actually called, wanted to come up so we could go over, but I was down there doing the pipe job, so I couldn't leave, but. I mean, they've been a very good contractor, keeping in communication about it and everything.
Good.
They told, showed us how to use them today, so I think we're done.
Yeah.
Nice.
If there's a problem, he said, call right away, um, so. They've been good with that, and other than that, I have, I've got a few, we've done some work orders. On a few different things, the library's got a few stumps or something they want taken out at some point. I think I actually just saw one tonight in my email that she got a drip on a faucet or something, I think, but we'll.
Well, that's what, aren't we due to hire a a fifth? Isn't there another opening based on the last time? So that we could focus on, I mean, the whole proactive. Maintenance part of buildings has always been a perennial issue.
Yep.
Just, I'm channeling Lois at the moment, so I remember her, her thoughts.
Yeah.
Um, on that position, so I just wanna make sure we happy to sit.
No, we're trying to keep up with them, I mean, the only other big thing that we've had, and I did talk to Colleen this morning because that stove is acting up again.
Oh, crap, I was, I was down there too. Her pilot goes out on the top and I don't know why, but I went down and. As soon as you turn the thing and light them, and they light them all back up, the gas smell completely goes away, so. The oven stayed lit.
Right, I think it's getting a a backdraft on the new hood they put in from the chimney outside. That's the only, because of, it's happened, it only happens when we have a lot of wind. But when we've had a lot of wind, we've been monitored, none of the windows or the doors, because they always, sometimes during the day, they'll leave the door open, so they thought it was blowing the pilots out. But it's supposed to kick the gas, trip the gas, reset on the side, which it. Because a couple of them are going and one's out, it just lets the gas go in and then when people walk in, you can, especially when it was humid out last week. So today, what I told her is, she'll just have to call us to, because they needed to use it today, so we lit it. Uh, Ed came over yesterday and got it all going.
Okay.
They used it, but I told her that there's a little valve behind there and I told her to shut it off when they were done. So when they go to use it again, that way it's not gonna, over a weekend, fill the, the smell of gas when everybody comes in Monday is horrific.
Right, and we can, we can light, I mean, I showed her, well, I showed her how you can light. The this top, the biggest problem is lighting the oven.
Right, because you gotta get down and it's way underneath, you gotta hold the button and reach way in.
I thought we solved all that, this is like a repeating.
It was repaired, it got repaired, but, but one side of that oven, I don't think they can get parts.
No, we're, we're working on it.
Yeah.
I know someone with the same oven who doesn't use one of the ovens and I'm gonna see if I can scavenge that part, it's the same Garland stove. And if we, if they're not using that side of the oven, then maybe we can get that part and then both.
We thought at first, that's what was leaking, but the gas, the stove guy actually has that side of the burner. Uh, isolated from everything else.
Okay.
But it's just the, a one or two of the pilots go out and then they sit there with that little gas just coming out, so.
How old is the oven, do you have any idea?
Oh, those stoves last forever, those big industrial gas stoves.
Sounds like a really big liability issue to have gas pooling in the downstairs, that's, I just was asking.
I think Colleen is looking around, but I don't know.
It's not a danger, they've even come over with a gas meter from the fire department and it doesn't register, but it's a smell, it's just, it's just a smell. But there's no, there's no danger to to anyone, but we're working on turning it off and then. The only thing we need help is lighting the oven.
If she only needs the top, but the problem is if you don't light that bottom and the bottom's leaking the whole time.
Well, the smell is there for a reason. It's added to make sure that.
It's like today, what she did, because it smelled a little bit this morning, she said, when she called and. So she shut the swinging door and opened the back door and a, and a window. So the smell just went out and didn't hover into the, the dining area or the hallway or whatever. So it's just, I mean, I know she said she was looking into it as well, so I.
We've been talking about it, I talked to her today.
Find anything out about it, just let us know.
Well, we can see what happens at the next update too, so long as it's getting attention.
Other than that, I mean, Isaac's been doing everything down there and the fire department's done anything there, like I said, we've done a few things at the library. Information, but other than that, we haven't any work orders to, that've come in.
Yeah, I, at some point, I think when Heath is here and that subcommittee. We wanted to get back to the proactive maintenance list, yeah, I, I think that's a concern for the library as well, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as getting you another person, maybe if he can't work with you, I'll work with you on.
On the committee?
Well, to try to get some sort of.
Opening.
That's what I need, to get it written up, get it posted.
I think we're just waiting for the new, uh, first of July, yeah.
All right, if you need any help with it, or something, you know. Okay.
All right, that's all I got, let's see if somebody else has anything.
Thank you. Well, it's good to know what's going on, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we have citizens' concerns. What I, quite a few people here, I mean. How many, usually it's three, we are limited to five people at three minutes apiece, but how many people are here for citizens' concerns? Okay, it's about six. Okay, so. If we can keep it a minimum, you know, a maximum three minutes, but if you can get it done less. Um, you know, that would be appreciated, so we don't go too long, okay? All right, who wants to come up first?
Good evening, everybody.
Name and address and.
Hi, my name is Brian Boardner. I am from the famous Ashwell Road. And I've been a lifelong resident in Northfield for sixty-eight years. I run the second oldest continuous. Operation in Northfield, the only industrial manufacturing operation left. My family will celebrate sixty-five years next year and I've owned it for thirty-eight. I'm also the founder of the Northfield Taxpayers Protection Association. Which is a community activism organization. Why I'm here tonight is to present a letter of request that has been signed by over a hundred and fifty residents. And I'd like to present it to the Select Board. And I'll read it to you, it is a request by the residents taxpayers. For Select Board vote. And at the top of the page, all these signatures, it says, the following sign requests the Select Board. At the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting, to vote not to renew the town administrator's contract. Now, I'm gonna submit to you. This list for your consideration. Part of citizenship is being able to come to your local government and tell them what you want and. A hundred and fifty signatures in five or six days is significant. It was only a hundred and nine people at town meeting this year. And this is the basis for a very formidable block of voters. So I'm gonna submit this to you.
Okay.
I'm under my three minutes, I'm sure.
You are, I got the clock, I got the clock running, we, just so everybody knows, we can't comment on the citizens' comments, because.
Correct.
Correct, just so anybody else too, we can't.
My work is done here.
Your work's done.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I have a point of order on that, have those signatures been certified?
I don't know, they have.
Uh, as far as today, because I'm the town clerk, assistant town clerk, we have not certified any of those signatures. So they may be town residents or town voters, but it should be certified. Uh, through our department. But it's all petitions are done that way.
So does the citizen need to bring it to you then?
It should have come to the um, town clerk. And the town clerk goes through the voting records to make sure that they are actually. Uh, voting members in the town of Northfield, uh, then it would be certified, just like nomination papers and any other uh petitions to go through.
Okay.
Just one order.
All right, thank you.
So do we need to hand it back?
Yeah, well, we're in an open meeting, right, so can he take it and do that, or is, I don't understand. It's like a, it's like a, um.
The problem is the office is closed.
Oh.
Uh, we do not have hours tonight, so it'd have to be uh brought tomorrow at nine o'clock. And it could be certified at that point in time.
Okay.
Anybody members of the Select Board can call point of order.
Well, we're.
This, this point of order, that's all.
Point of order, yeah.
And then I'd like to speak after that, if possible, you two up first, go ahead.
Yeah, you're next, well. Can we put this in the mailbox down there?
Yes, you can.
Or if somebody, if somebody on the Select Board wants to bring it in.
I, I think the citizen needs to.
Well, I think he's already left.
Again, it should have, it should have come to the, the office of the town clerk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Susan Wright, I live at sixty-seven South Mountain Road. The Select Board should renew the employment contract with tr- uh, town administrator Andrea Lamas. I feel compelled to speak tonight because I've heard rumors that there are people in town who want the Select Board to vote not to renew the town administrator's contract. I feel uniquely qualified to give my opinion on this matter, as I retired after thirty-six years in local government, having served towns in Franklin, Hampshire and Handen Counties. In the capacities of town administrator, school business manager and city finance director. I know the skills required for an effective town administrator and have great respect for the ability of those who serve in these multifaceted jobs. Where you need to be knowledgeable about a huge range of municipal issues. There are few professional staff to rely on in small towns and a range of skills among the many volunteer boards and commissions. So it is imperative that the town administrator have experience and leadership abilities. I also served on the town administrator's search committee when Ms. Lamas was hired in the fall of twenty eighteen. She was far and away the most qualified person we interviewed and we were pleased she accepted the position in Northfield. Especially given Northfield's histories with town administrators. Northfield had a revolving door of town administrators for many years before Ms. Lamas joined our staff here in Northfield. There were many town administrators and many interim town administrators and a host of issues due to the lack of continuity. Prior administrators were sometimes inexperienced, lacked people's skills and did not have strong employment history prior to coming to Northfield. The years of turmoil took a toll on the progress the town made on projects, budgeting, securing grant funds, administering fair and equitable personnel policies. There were many years of unhappy staff in town hall and it was well known throughout Franklin County that Northfield was not a great place to work at times. In the past several years, with Ms. Lamas as our town administrator, Northfield has made great progress in many areas. She is professional and experienced, she has provided stability to the town and for the town hall staff. She has led with thoughtfulness and creativity, anyone trying to discredit her record is uninformed. There appears to be a faction in town that do not understand the role of the town administrator, the Select Board. And the limits on what one member of a board can do without the full agreement of the board. One member of a board is not charged with directing the work of town staff and the town administrator. The board as a whole must be deciding town priorities and the town administrator carries out those priorities. Hopefully without interference from individual board members. It's very hard to find qualified staff in all areas of municipal government right now, as many of us have retired and left the field. Because of increasingly contentious actions of vocal minorities. Northfield would be foolish to think that they can find a new town administrator that would exceed the expertise and professionalism of Ms. Lamas. It takes years for a town administrator to fully learn the job and acquire the skills in multiple areas such as budgeting, capital planning, procurement. Personnel policy administration, municipal law, school administration, environmental and health regulations and municipal finance. Northfield would be throwing away years of experience and history and it would take a long time to get a new town administrator up to speed. Ms. Lamas' salary is in line with town administrators in Western Massachusetts in similar sized town. Quoting salaries on ZipRecruiter is just ridiculous, they will not find anyone more qualified at a lesser salary. But if they do find someone to work at a lower rate of pay, it will absolutely be a person with less experience. And someone more likely to be manipulated by board members who may overstep their authority. We need a strong professional in our small town, one who is not motivated by politics and agendas, and we have that. The Select Board should not jeopardize the stability and progress the town has made. By ousting yet another town administrator in favor of saving money and or having more control. Let the town administrator do her job with the direction of the five-member board of selectmen. Don't return to the past and the instability of leadership that prevailed for years, please vote to renew Ms. Lamas' contract.
Thanks, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Campbell, eight sixty-three Old Wendell Road, uh, twenty years on the Finance Committee, Chairman of Finance Committee. Uh, ten years, uh, town clerk, uh, three, three year, or one year assistant town clerk. I have firsthand knowledge of the workings of um, the town, I've worked with many administrators for twenty years. And or interim administrators. For the last, um, we had three actually administrators that we, the town decided that we needed an administrator. We have a ten million dollar business here, so you can't have somebody that is working part-time and doing the job correctly. Uh, she, uh, Andrea's brought stability to that department, she has brought knowledge to that department. She has brought well over a million dollars with the help of a grant writer that she suggested that we had. And besides other uh, grants that we have, she is more than um, paid for her uh, her job. Over the last uh, years of her service, in fact, I think she's about five times over what she, she's being paid. She, I think if you check what her percentage is, it's probably about one percent of our total budget. But for that one percent, she has got, gotten over several million dollars of free money. From state and federal governments that we would probably not have had. So just, if you think that uh, the job is that easy, she is there to help the Select Board. To uh, make sure they make the right decisions. Ultimately, the decisions that are made in this town, whether monetary or um, any kind of uh. Well, basically monetary, are done by the people of the town of Northfield. If you look at some of the projects that are out there and somebody complained that uh, we spent X number of dollars on a piece of property for our uh, service building. Uh, that was voted by the taxpayer of the town of Northfield, they were the ones that decided to uh, purchase that property. There is nobody here that can purchase property without their knowledge. You guys can okay it once it's been uh, done, but for some reason, someone has said that uh. The town administrator has total control of the money, no, the town of Northfield has control of the money. Uh, you guys sign off every, every week to allow us to get paid, she doesn't do that. So the buck stops right here as far as doing that. But if you want your jobs are, to be done a lot easier, because you guys do not have the knowledge that it's necessary to run this town. I just wanna let you know that one of the worst decisions you could possibly make is not redoing per contract. And I say that and I know the rest of the town employees that are working at town hall would agree with me today.
Okay, thank you.
You are.
Joe Gravelin, oh, Ferry Road, the oldest road in town. And the only damn house selling it. Been living in town for thirty-seven years, over twenty years on historical.
over twenty years on historical commission. Real quick, I'm living in real time, around real people, and around real conversations. Now, our town administrator is not just our town administrator, she's our chief procurement officer. Now, a lot of folks are wondering why this desk costs so much money and why we didn't truly have a sense of what the negotiations were with purchasing this desk. We have a roll of paper up in the map room with a rubber band around it that costs us $1 million. That's $1,000 a day, 365 days a year, for three and a half years. Now, what happened that that much money should have been generated to create that roll of paper? We were not part of that. It may have been voted in, but we were not part of understanding what the choices were as to who was going to draw up the design of that building and why it should have cost so much. A piece of property that was purchased to facilitate that emergency center was assessed in and around $36,000. And what did we pay for it? $178,000, something like that. We're trying to figure out where the discrepancies are coming in. And so what I'm saying is, I'm talking to real people in real time. There was supposed...the project should have been vetted through federal guidelines. And I remember when the planning board was having a conversation with the chief builder who was going to try to start the project by the following October of that conversation, I reminded him that he had obligations under Federal 106. He said, "We don't have any obligations under Federal 106." I said, "Well, sure you do. You're going to have two curb cuts on a state highway. That state highway has had millions of dollars poured in it over the years, and it's a federal connection." That wasn't vetted into the process. That kind of stuff should have been looked at long before the maps were drawn up, long before the property was purchased, and it wasn't. And people stopped me on the street, and they say, "Well, what's that all about?" I say, "I don't know how to explain it to you because I have no answers, but I have no confidence as well, and I'm encouraging you not to renew the contract." There's another year to go, but I understand that you folks have to make a decision before the 30th. But I think we need to do a reset, and if this is the only chance to do a reset and a new conversation, I think it needs to happen. Real people are talking to me in real time. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
There's a river coming down on me.
What's that?
See the water?
Yeah.
Virginia Hastings, 30 North Lane. There are really three questions going on here to not renew. The first one is to not renew. The second question is to not renew and at least review what you want in a contract. I know that...I think this contract has gone on since 2018, and things change a lot in six years. So I think it's important to review it again. Look at what other schools...sorry, what other towns have for contracts. You know, I know you don't have time to do all the homework, but you know, they do vary. They're, you know, pretty much boilerplate, the contracts, but there are certain details that they do add to it. One thing I would like...so the first thing is to not renew. The second one is to renew, and the other...to renew...sorry. Not renew, not renew, and review, and then renew, okay? And I think it would be important for all... I wish there were five members here, but four members to not renew at this point and review the contract. An important piece of the contract. I had it as a schoolteacher. Every three years is a performance review. We all had them. I found it exciting because it would help me see what my strengths were and what my weaknesses were. I loved getting a pat on the back. That was really fun. And then I knew, I need to look at this. I'm not communicating directly with kids in a way that I should have done a better job. So I found that enormously helpful for me. So in this case, I would at least like to see something like a performance review put into the contract.
Into the contract.
Thank you. How many more people we got? Two? Okay, if you can make it. That was very good, that was two minutes.
Tammy Pelletier, 122 Warwick Road. I was totally mystified by Mr. Gravelin's statements about not knowing what's going on with the emergency service building and the amounts of money that we voted on at town meeting in each increment from studies to buying the property. That committee has been going on for over nine years, and I think was well-enforced before Andrea was even hired. So if he doesn't know what's going on, it's because he didn't pay attention. Anybody could have gone to all of those open meetings. And I think it's a pity that it didn't pass. There was an awful lot of work involved in it. And it was a disappointment for a lot of people, but it was not any one person's decision. It was not any one person's expense agree. We did it as a town, and it was a disappointment. But it was not...there was no alibi involved. So, secondly, I was the chair of the previous town governance committee. We worked very hard to distinguish this position from the previous position of administrative assistant, which had several people in it. It was not that functional. There was a lot of chaos in that situation. So we voted as the previous town governance committee had suggested for a strong administrator. So that said, I think it was a good decision. I think both committees came to that conclusion, and I think the proof is in the pudding. I think Andrea has been an excellent town administrator, and I think you should renew her contract.
Thank you. And one more?
Hi, Bernard Parada, 67 South Mountain Road, Northfield, Mass. I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'm still a member of the Finance Committee until June 30th, just so you're aware of the situation. I have...I'm just a little surprised because I hear a petition has been put forward, but I hear no justification, no reasons, no clear-cut accusations of malfeasance or incompetence or a clear lack of coordination or between the select board and her position. And then I hear also a lot of false informa... well, I shouldn't say false. I say, "lack of information, misconceptions on one person's part who brought forward about the public safety building or emergency services building." I was on that committee, and I still am for seven and a half years. We approved everything unanimously in moving forward on that committee, on that building, the project expenditures, everything. The Finance Committee approved it. The select board approved it, and so did the townspeople approve it. So, and as in the curb cuts, we went through...were going through Mass DOT in the process of seeking permission for the curb cuts. We also...the board, all boards were brought forward, planning, CONCOM, everyone. We had plenty of town public meetings. We had a most open process ever. Did the townspeople reject it? Yes, but they cannot blame Andrea Lamas for that. That blame, if they feel that it should be, then it should be apportioned to all of us. She was not the cause. We started this committee years before she even showed up here to be our town administrator. And again, I have not heard one reason, clear-cut reason, why she should not be, you know, reappointed or have her contract renewed or extended. I'm just appalled to say I have a petition for people, but no justification, no reasoning. Nothing explained to any of us here in this audience or you or you, the select board, reason why. And until that happens, I think this should be absolutely denied. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, that ends citizens' concerns. As you know, we can't comment on that, on what's going on. You know, there was other stuff in our agenda pertaining to it. That's all I can say. All right, let's get to renewal, review, and approval of warrants. 626-24 payroll warrant of $88,954.52.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
Nope, nope. I didn't...is that the one that was missing its sheet? That we...the payroll was?
It was payroll.
This is dripping or spewing...
Spitting a little.
The condensation turn the...change the temperature.
There's a building and utilization committee that was disseminated. Whatever happened to that FERC to handle the maintenance and buildings and stuff? There's crumbling walls in the women's bathroom. There may be issues.
On that maintenance position, we've had a hard time keeping somebody in that position from the...
There was a committee before that was disseminated due to the lack of...
Let's move on.
Okay.
That's why we have the highway superintendent update us.
All right. Any...
I move that we...
It's okay to have it on. It's just...I just didn't want it earthen on the computer.
I move that we approve the June 26, 2024 vendor warrant of $113,123.54, which we...
We didn't vote on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, sorry. I was hoping we were moving forward.
Any other comments on the payroll one?
No.
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. It's funny, get interrupted, then it's...
626-24 vendor warrant of $113,123.54. Highway.
So moved.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
That and aye, David?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we got three.
Okay. I move that we approve the vendor warrant of July 1, 2024 of $285,529.90, and this is for county retirement.
Just so you know, that's because it's the first warrant for fiscal '25. She won't mail it, but she's processing it to mail on the first day.
Gotcha.
We get a discount if we pay it in the first so many weeks.
Okay.
Discounts are good.
So moved.
Is the entirety...oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We haven't gotten to the question.
All right, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Is the entirety of that vendor warrant county retirement?
I believe so. You have the warrant over there, but I believe it's one payment.
Yeah.
It's not in this one.
The green one, maybe?
No, there's others besides the county.
Is there a few other things in there?
Short one, but...
Yeah, it's a short one.
The bulk of it is county retirement.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, could you tell me who the second was on?
I think it was David.
David?
I was the second.
I did the so moved, and then David did the so moved again, but...
Just backing you.
Who's on first?
Now, any other comments?
Nope.
No.
All those in favor approving the 7124 vendor warrant?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Yay for discounts.
Yeah. All right.
All right, I move that we approve the executive session minutes from May 28, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any discussion on that?
No.
No, I don't understand.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then I had a few in the handout. Just some clarification correction on FERC versus Mass DEP language and dates. So I move that we approve the June 11, 2024 minutes as amended.
Second? I'll second that.
Oh, I'm gonna have to move because it's gonna mess up my computer. Oh. Yeah, it's...I just don't want it to drip on the computer. It's my work computer.
Any discussion on the minutes?
Not for me.
Okay. All those in favor approving the 6124 minutes?
I'm gonna abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Would you hand me the paperwork?
I'm sorry?
Would you hand me the phone?
This?
Please.
Sandra, on the minutes, I abstained. Oh.
Okay, interim select board meetings, there was none.
To open the door.
We had to have the door open for open meeting.
You can't shut the door.
Oh, sorry. Oh, microphone.
Okay. Meetings and events attended by select board members.
Okay, miss.
David, did you have any?
I have not.
Okay. Sarah?
Let me pull it up. Economic Development Advisory Committee, open space. I met with the police chief and the highway... with Tom Walker, the highway director.
Okay. B?
All I had was the FERCOG council meeting that we're going to be talking about.
Okay.
The result of which we'll be talking about.
All right. I had the three-town select board finance committee meeting. And I had the...I attended FERCOG's mosquito palooza thing. Yeah, that was emergency scenarios. If we do get an outbreak of Tripoli or West Nile, just going over, you know, make sure that the Board of Health basically are prepared to handle that situation. And, you know, the emergency contacts, how FERCOG will help us. We're in the mosquito district, which does help us greatly in that if something happens like that. I think that's it for me.
Could we add to the agenda to hear about the three-town? Reposed?
Proposed.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Okay, we're not there yet, but...
Just as long as we're on here, I was thinking.
I just wrote it down.
Okay. Did you hear an update on that?
Okay.
We'll remind you at the end.
All right. All right. Business, end-of-year transfers.
So I'm going to hand you these originals because you have to sign them. They've already been signed by the Finance Committee who met last night, and I think you all got a copy of them. So I don't know if you just want to kind of go through them. I can give you each one. The one on the top is transfer from highway department regular wages to highway department snow removal wages. This is a balancing act we go through every year.
We have to vote on each one?
Yes.
Okay.
And so we're asking to transfer thirty-six thousand to the snow removal wages. Present balance on the highway department wages is about a hundred and six thousand, so plenty to cover. It's just an end-of-the-year transfer. We go through this every end of the year.
Since I, since I have the sheets, I'll.
Once you, once you vote, you can fill them out.
Yeah, but I'll do the, I'll read it.
Yep.
I'll read the, I'll make the motions and just need somebody to second. Transfer to snow removal wages, thirty-six thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
From?
From highway department wages regular.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Transferred to the town report, three thousand fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents from the tuition and transport out of district balance.
Second.
Any?
This is because we instituted a new
Yeah.
book, if anyone saw it.
Yeah, I just wanted them.
We did, and we did up the budget for next year in anticipation.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Payment?
That's the backup material for the one you just did.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
It's just the invoice, I attached the.
Oh, okay, that's where it doesn't have a sticker on it. Okay. All right. Transfer to animal control, regular.
Regional kennel.
Regional kennel, sixty dollars?
No, amount requested is one thousand four hundred forty dollars. The present balance is sixty.
Oh, okay. So.
Oh, from and to.
From and to. I don't have the one thousand dollar.
Yes, all the way on the left, top line. The amount requested.
Oh, okay, I've had the page covered.
Here, take that off and.
Yeah.
There you go.
Transfer from tuition transfer out of district, one thousand four hundred forty dollars to animal control regional kennel.
Second.
This is to pay the cost of the kennel, uh, for your prior dangerous dog process, um, an euthanization or youth in Asia order because the judge reversed it. The, um, person is not liable for the kennel costs, the town is.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Electantly.
Okay.
I want to add, okay, we'll do it in a minute.
Okay. And transfer from tuition transfer out of district, the amount of four thousand eleven dollars and forty-one cents, transferred to streetlights.
Yeah, well, as anyone knows the electric bill, you'll know what happened with the streetlight bill. So we paid last month and we went slight, we went negative fifteen hundred dollars, and so we're, I am moving additional twenty-five hundred for what we can anticipate for the June bill. To cover the, to cover our balance.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool.
And lastly, transfer seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents from tuition and transfer out of district to town hall kitchen stove.
This was the.
Speaking of stoves.
You can make the second before I speak.
Second, sorry.
Okay.
Um, this was the, the repair that had them come in and do the maintenance on and figure out what the problem is, repair the part in the one oven and figure out we couldn't get the second oven and. So this is the initial work on that.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
For your signature.
We have the economic, that's it for end-of-year transfers, right?
Yes.
Well, that's not bad.
No, it's not that many issues.
We've been longer less than the past.
We have the Economic Development Advisory Committee update.
Awesome. We're here. The gang's all here.
Wait, you're.
Oh, gosh, thank you.
Gonna drag me with you.
Hello, guys. Yeah.
Is there a handout?
I'm sorry?
Is there a handout?
There is a handout. But if you hand it out at the beginning, people look at the handout and.
That's right. We like to. I like to do my notes. Yeah, that's clear.
Okay. So I am the chair of the Northfield Economic Development Advisory Council, which I commonly call NIDAC, and different people call it different things. Um, so the overview of what we're going to talk about is I'm going to give you the committee perspective on NIDAC. And, um, introduce the members. The members have some things to say, and then we're going to go over last year's goals and objectives and discuss what's on the horizon. When discussing what was, what we as a committee would view as success for Northfield, the words thriving, vitality, sustainable growth, and gatherings to look forward to came to the fore. We believe that any sustainable economic development plan will start with what we have, our town distinctives. We're a small rural land and natural resource-rich town. If we damage these distinctives, we're damaging our economic development potential. Joelle did an amazing inventory of the master plan, written, and the master plan, of course, was written to guide our town's future. And almost every project that our, or idea that NIDAC is working on is found in its pages. We're not reinventing the wheel, we're just moving it forward. As we discuss the goals and objectives, you will see that our aim is to build on and consolidate the amazing work done by committees and citizens who've come before to make a centralized and accessible guide to Northfield resources. So I will pass out this, just a, just a little thing that you can take notes on if you want, if you can, here, I'll give you one.
I can do it.
And I'll hand those over to everything over there. Very, just a little biz. Do you want to hold one? You want one here, I can do it. Oh, yeah, sure. So. Um, we believe that any sustainable economic development plan will start with what we have, our town distinctives, of rural character and natural industrial beauty. Built on this important foundation are the pillars of farms and food. We have some of the richest farmland in the world. Natural beauty, recreation, and ecotourism, the forests and wildlife, and hiking, and biking, and boating. History and culture, the farms and buildings, and important sites that are all through our town, and business, supporting existing businesses and encouraging sustainable business growth within the context of our foundational concepts. So the capstone, of course, is community, gatherings to look forward to, buying local, enjoying natural resources, and inviting others to visit gently and spend money. So the members of the group, current members, um, I'm going to introduce them and then they'll say the things that they're interested in, in working on. But we do have an overreaching objective of interest in community. James Hastings is a lifelong artist and teacher. She lives near Thomas Aquinas College and has extensive experience running three small businesses at different times. Um, her special interests are in walkability, beautification, and outdoor recreation or recreational tourism. Steve Stoya is a pillar of the community. He lives on Main Street near the business district, owns and runs Centennial House, and has special interests in business park, livable wages, and arts and cultural resources. Patricia Young is a small business, we managed to sit in order, how did that happen? It's amazing. Is a small business owner of Restore Physical Therapy. She has a special interest in food production, sustainability, and highlighting what we have in our town to build interest and bring money. Joelle Fabrizio, our newest member and newly our clerk, works in grants and equity, lives in the lower farms area, has a family business, and a child in the school district, and her special interest in supporting community resource and workers. And me, um, I work in data communication. I'm on the open space and conservation commissions and obviously the select board. And my special interest in community gatherings and highlighting our town's existing natural, cultural, and small-town business resources. So we're working on a guide to Northfield as a group, but some, each of the members has different ideas that they're interested in exploring and are kind of spearheading. So let's just go in order. Do you want?
Okay, so I have an interest, well, two different interests. One is perennial plantings. I would like to see Northfield's beautification happen, you know, on front lawns, um, especially on Main Street. I know it's a highway, I understand that, but I think there are ways to have plantings like black-eyed susans and day lilies and, um, daffodils and so forth that would be planted, um, right on Main Street or any street in town, but to just enhance what we have here. If it wasn't a good idea, you didn't like mowing around it, they could easily just be mowed down. So I feel like it's a good start to do that. And Leslie gave me an extensive list of grants that we could apply for. I have forwarded the list to the, um, gardening committee in town. As yet, I haven't heard back from them, from them, but hopefully they'll get on board too. The second part of my interest and my husband Howard's is to, um, do some maps for biking, so that we have, we've already done a couple of maps showing, you know, a family loop that could be done around town, of course, winding up with the creamy or the centennial house. And then some more, um, you know, modern biking maps for people who, you know, they just want to know where to go and where could I stop, you know, the forest or farm or whatever it is. And the third one is a much more extensive vigorous route that goes up through the covered bridge, you have sure there. So that's what we're working on, showing elevations and distances and things that you might encounter. And that would go on a mapping range that we are going to put together and have a QR code, so people could easily, um, you know, check it out on there.
And we're going to talk about it.
Yeah.
That later.
Hi. My wife and I came to, uh, Northfield in two thousand and three, and we've run the, uh, Centennial House for twenty years now. And we immediately got involved in economic development. The reason why was because we moved in, in two thousand and three, and a month into two thousand and four, the, the second campus of NMH closed. So we thought it was our fault, but no, it wasn't. What it did though was it, it kind of, uh, put a red light up there and said, um, see if you can organize, see if you can help with this situation. So what we did was we, we created an organization called the Northfield Area.
Tourism. Tourism, that's it. Tourism.
Thank you very much. Um, and, and what we did was we created a brochure similar to what I think we're talking about now, and we, we drew on the community strengths, but the region's strength as well. So we talked about all the outdoor recreation resources that the area had. We talked about, um, at that time, the, uh, the local food, because there was the food, the farm-to-table movement, but then you have the, uh, the winery in South Amherst, and they were growing their own and continue to grow their own grapes. And we now have the, the hops in South Amherst where. Four started, thank you very much. What we tried to do was capitalize on all those themes and put it into a brochure. And that brochure was a very popular brochure, and then came COVID. And, uh, what happened was the, the committee, the, um, the tourism committee met and talked about what the town needed. And that was the seed for creating the, the.
Business Park Committee?
Business Park Committee, right. So many of you know that the Massa Plan spoke of a business park back then, and also that, that the, um, the, the Business Park Committee was founded back then and was chaired by Barry Boardner, with Steve Serendinsky on it, John McDougall, and also the very tall select board member.
John, uh, Spanback.
Mr. Spanback, yes. And they produced a wonderful report that I have and a few other people have and some consultants have. And, um, it, it's a blueprint for going towards a business park. Why am I high on a business park? Economic development has a lot to do with changing the quality of life in a town. In order to do that, people need to earn, um, a good wage in a town. What we have in, in Northfield right now is a lot of, what's the term?
Houses?
Creamies, the creamy, uh.
Small businesses?
Yeah, small, but, but, no, the, the, the wage is not a living wage, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
And what, what the Business Park offers is an opportunity to possibly create a, a, add more businesses to town and create living wages. There's a way to get at other problems that the town has through that as well. Like, for instance, this town is not exactly family-friendly. In terms of children and, um, and parents, there's not much housing that's available for families. That, I don't know many a housing starts in the area, but the Business Park possibly could also house some, uh, family housing as well. So it, it is, it is a long-term goal. It is a very, um, onerous goal to go towards, but it's a very important goal for this town and its, its future.
Patricia?
I am taking the angle of recreation and fun seasonal projects. So these are some ideas with regard to recurring, um, seasonal events, so people can look forward to them. Um, what comes to mind is how I love going to the Asheville Fair or to the Garlic Festival, and these different towns are known for things. So I want to get Northfield known for fun things to come to as well. So that's sort of the, the, um, trail I was on in, in doing these things. So the first is a Taste of Franklin County, which I don't know if any of you have been to, a Taste of Amherst, whereby we get local restaurants from Franklin County and/or food trucks of the surrounding towns, um, to gather together and basically have a food party. Also, it would give the opportunity to start businesses, like Franklin County CDC supports financially, to introduce their food. And I, what comes to mind is there was a hard cider company, there was a pickle company, but it also allows them to come out and meet the people of Franklin County and introduce what food they have in their particular industry, thinking we would include Greenfield Guild Turners, but we would be like the host, we would be the come-to people. The second one, um, would be a harvest festival where we honor the farmers in our community and the surrounding area. Where we would have, um, a gathering of all the different fathers, farmers, whether or not they wanted to sell things, um, their, all their food, their produce for the harvest, and maybe we have a harvest feast where people volunteer to cook or bring, we do a major potluck. I don't know, I haven't worked the details out. But the objective would be to do this before, the end of August, before school, reconvened as everybody getting together to kick off the end of the summer and back to school sort of thing. We could have entertainment there. Um, the high school kids do face painting and games with the small children and have, you know, food trucks, music, that sort of thing. And then the third thing, um, I was thinking of was an old-fashioned holiday skate party, where we could figure out we would either build a skate or maybe us the golf course if they'd let us do it there. That's, uh, something to discuss. Um, bonfire, you know, hot chocolate games, hay rides up and down Highland Avenue. Thinking that would be great the weekend of Thanksgiving, like Friday, I mean, Saturday or Sunday, and maybe be able to correlate that with, uh, the different bizarre fairs that they're having at the local churches in town. So it's a festive occasion. So anyway, those are just some of the ideas that, um, I would love to see put into motion so that we have little seasonal, um, activities for people to do and draw them into Northfield to spend money.
Um, and something that I was, uh, thinking about that I think we could do that's, you know, low-hanging for, for lack of a better term, is, is really like put together and expand on resources that might already exist, like guides and maps that we already have that point folks in the direction of different farms in the area where you can purchase, uh, fruit and vegetables. Um, right now, we already have the Agricultural Commission years ago put together an amazing, uh, guideline, a nice big map of all of the different farms in the area. Yes, that.
They have farms listed on the back that sell directly to the public and those that don't sell. Really nice.
Yeah. Uh, but I think it'd be worth spending some time to reconnect, uh, with some of the farmers in the area and see what their needs are, if there's things we can support them with, if they're interested in having their businesses promoted, if they have open, uh, hours that we can put together on pamphlet to guide, you know, visitors to town to, um, different farms and where they might sell, sell things onsite. We also discussed as a group, you know, uh, convening some farmers in town to see if they're interested in perhaps, um, opening up their doors for one day a year where we can bring visitors in to come and tour. There was some conversation, I guess, previously that we learned about where, um, someone had the idea of, you know, having more, uh, open space for, for, for visitors to come onto, to a lot of the different local farms, and not all of the farmers were really psyched about that idea.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh. But one year, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, we were thinking, much, much as there's, um, you know, folks who come from all over the state and some, a, a portion of the region to come over for Asparagus Day or Asparagus festivals, or, um, there's a pottery trail that people come and follow, um, you know, trying to think of something in that kind of a vein to maybe promote and bring folks to visitors into town. But overall, I think what we've all discussed that we've also found was really, you know, curated and put together really well in the two thousand and fourteen master plan. Also from the study that Leslie put together is still in need and a desire from a lot of residents is, is preserving and promoting, um, a lot of the natural resources we have here and promoting recreation. a lot of the natural resources we have here and promoting recreation that we have at our fingertips. We're really lucky to have so much beautiful, good space, promoting the farmers and agricultural industry that we have here. We have a lot of rich history here as well. And there is, of course, I think a need to further support and incentivize other small businesses to come into Northfield. Like Steve said, there's definitely room for jobs. We've lost a lot of jobs in this town over the last few decades. We do still have most of our workers in town is still heavily lying in the education sector. So I think there's some support maybe that we can look at there as well and how do we support the workers we have already today and their needs and their advancement opportunities that they might want to take advantage of. But overall, I think we are very lucky. We have a lot of beautiful, natural, historical resources here. And I think it's very clear that the town wants to preserve those things. And I think there's ways to promote economic development sustainably and to preserve the natural character, moral character of the town. And that's really what I think a lot of us, brings a lot of us together is doing that.
And a couple of individual ideas that we've talked about that are kind of my focus. We talked about a flotilla, a once-a-year inner tube as a town on our new boat, using a new boat rent. Shakespeare in the Park, buried electric down Main Street because it's better for the infrastructure and for appearance reasons and historical. And we're removing the invasives for access, for better access to conservation properties. Currently, the list of the main project that we're working on as a group is the Guide to Northfield. And we're using, as I held up this, I'm coding the maps right now. It's the kind of thing that takes a while and then it just kind of comes out full-formed. But we're using to make the flyers that we've seen from other departments. For instance, Open Space has this of the different trails. So one of the maps in our Guide to Northfield would be the bike trails, the walking trails, that are done by other people, but they're amalgamated together so that it's a resource for tourists. The, we've talked with the Northfield Bird Club and they have bird sightings that we can add as links onto these maps. Another map would be Farm Stand and Food Sources, which we could use the Ag Committee. Another would be Historical Buildings and the bike, I think I said the bike and hiking routes. So those are our individual and our group ideas. We also went through and looked, there were proposed goals and objectives when the committee was formed and those were going to be changed. And we went through and looked at how we had met or not met those goals and objectives. And we have met or addressed all of them. The one that is less addressed is the update economic development webpage to include helpful resources for prospective business owners. So that's an area that we can improve going forward. We do have, from the grant consultants, they're producing data on open businesses in the town and open land, and they've agreed to share data. So we'll have that to give, you know, to add to that prospective business owner's guide that people can know what kind of properties are available. So I can go, I know we've run a little long with our time, but I do have kind of a play-by-play on that list of prospective goals and objectives. I don't know if we want to go over it now, share it or not. Do you want to look over it or?
Not at the moment, we've got quite a bit to go.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna probably be back in another month. Because I have some things I want to discuss.
On economic development?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
On the committee.
Can I just say one thing? There are two consultants out there from Western Mass Area Development.
West Mass.
West Mass. And they're doing a feasibility study on the Business Park.
A Business Park.
A Business Park, right. And they're planning on having a September Citizens Input Meeting. Just wanted to give that commercial.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions to them or anything? Like I said, I wrote some questions down, but I think when you come back, I will. At this time, Leslie asked to speak. So I'd like to invite Leslie up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Sorry, the air conditioning was spitting on me, so it's why I moved over. In fact, you have kept the wrong name in front of you. Oops.
They would have figured it out.
At least you can feel it, I can't feel it over here. So I'm gonna start sweating.
It's no longer spitting. Hi.
Hi, Leslie.
I'm Grant Development Director. And I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about my experiences with the Economic Development Advisory Committee because I believe that I have information that is relevant to today's presentation. The first committee meeting I attended was on my fifth day of work. At the meeting, Sarah asked me to talk about the grants currently operating in Northfield. And I wasn't able to provide much information without my laptop in front of me. So I left the meeting feeling like I hadn't been very useful. I did tell the group about the grant, Funding a Business Park Feasibility Study, and I offered to put them in touch with that project's two consultants.
Gentlemen, it's a bit disruptive.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I made sure to prepare for the next committee meeting I was invited to, creating a two-page grant memo that I sent to the members a week in advance, along with an invitation to a listening session hosted by the Business Park Consultants. Twice over email, I asked the committee members to share their questions ahead of the meeting so that I could be better prepared. Not hearing back, I assumed the memo had been enough. On the day of the meeting, there were nine town residents also in the audience as well as the Director of Planning for the FERCog. This was surprising to me because there had only been the five group members at the previous meeting I attended. At the conclusion of my presentation, Sarah and Steve accused me of excluding their committee from the Business Park project by not asking them before setting the listening session date and not sending the consultants to talk to them at one of their meetings. I was surprised by their statements because I had twice made attempts to introduce them to the consultants. I didn't yet know that Steve and Sarah had both already met the consultants before I did at a kickoff meeting in February. The consultants had actually offered to come to an economic development meeting, but never heard back from the Chair or any of the members. After that meeting in April, I was surprised and frustrated. I felt like I had been set up to be reprimanded in front of town residents and people that I hadn't met yet. But I convinced myself that I was overreacting. I later found out that the day before the meeting, Sarah had posted on Nextdoor saying, "If you would like more information about the new grants, about the grants Northfield is currently administering, please join the Need Act meeting on April twenty-fourth. Our new grant coordinator will be joining us. Bring your questions and opinions." She did not inform me that I should prepare for questions from residents despite my attempts to reach out before the meeting. A few weeks later, Steve approached me in Town Hall to talk about that meeting, saying, "That was the strategy we decided we wanted to take with you." He also mentioned Mallory, the previous Grant Development Director, and said she may have gotten a leg up, but I think she understood her role by the time she left here. A few weeks later, Jinx approached me in the parking lot after work. She told me that the committee had felt that Mallory was concealing things from them. I found these conversations unsettling for multiple reasons. I have found Mallory to be an extremely forthcoming and knowledgeable person who has been generous with her time when answering my questions about this role. Other town employees and residents have also spoken highly of Mallory, saying that she was a pleasure to work with and a significant asset to Northfield. Additionally, I didn't understand the dynamic that Steve, Sarah, and Jinx were referring to. It had been Mallory's idea to create the Economic Development Advisory Committee. As with most other town committees, the group consists of volunteers who meet at most once a week for a few hours. It makes sense that a full-time employee of the town would be responsible for managing grant applications and ongoing projects. And it seems reasonable that the employee would not be expected to consult an advisory committee prior to taking action in their professional role. After these conversations, I became wary about attending future committee meetings, and I thought that laying low could help. But then the April meeting minutes were posted. In addition to containing inaccurate information, they are written to make me seem uninformed, obstinate, and dismissive of people's concerns. Shortly after that, I had a meeting with someone I'd never met before from Thomas Aquinas College, who told me that they had already heard of me after my name was brought up at an Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting. And not in a good way. Realizing that I was being discussed at committee meetings when I wasn't there caused me a great deal of stress. And meeting minutes indicate that this has happened multiple times. These experiences seemed to represent a larger issue that preceded me and also showed me that the behavior wouldn't stop even if I stopped going to their meetings. I began to feel like I had very few options. I didn't think that I could stop going to the meetings without being accused of shutting the group out of projects or having them discuss me behind my back. Altogether, these interactions have negatively impacted my job satisfaction, well-being, and ability to focus. All during my first three months in this role, when I'm already experiencing the stress that comes with navigating a new job. In mid-May, I reached out to the Chair, Sarah, over email to ask if we could meet to discuss these incidents and make a plan for communication moving forward. She responded by saying she didn't understand the need for such a meeting and then put me on the committee's next agenda for a monthly update despite the fact that I had specifically requested to not attend any future meetings until we had a chance to talk. I have also witnessed this pattern affecting other people. One of our grant-funded consultants was invited to attend a committee meeting and was unaware that Sarah had posted on Nextdoor inviting residents to come give their feedback about a business park in a residential neighborhood. He later said that he was not expecting the tone of the meeting where he had been questioned by frustrated committee members and town residents. The other consultant then called me after the meeting minutes came out because she was concerned that they contain inaccurate information and quotations from her business partner who was on paternity leave. Consultants can decide they do not want to work with us if they don't like the way that they're being treated. In this way, the behavior of certain Economic Development Advisory Committee members is now threatening the economic vitality of the town. I debated whether or not to talk about these experiences publicly, but I'm concerned that more harm would be done if I didn't say something. For these reasons and more, I thought it was essential to bring these concerns to the Select Board. Thank you for taking the time to let me speak about my experiences.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say one thing, that Leslie has come to me on multiple occasions. And I've tried to give her some good advice. She's tried to go on, strike it on her own. She's a very independent person. She wanted to reach out to people and try and manage those situations and make those connections on her own. But I have, I have supported her in saying that she absolutely should not attend those meetings if she is going to be treated as a staff person in such a way. And she has documented very well the behavior. And at this point, I think if you review the minutes, you'll see that they coincide with everything that she has said. And I feel it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that Mallory tried to create a committee that was supportive of her role and the future role and the town's economic development. But in all honesty, has sort of been weaponized against the two people in that position. And I feel very strongly that that is not, that's not fair to do to the staff by a volunteer committee that was appointed by the Select Board to actually be advisory with no real authority to give orders to the staff.
Okay, so I can directly address, may I speak, Chair?
Okay, I'll speak after.
Okay, that's fine. So I felt like there were several inaccuracies in what Leslie said. But per the minutes, I mean, the minutes are brought before the whole committee that was present at the meeting and are voted on and approved by the whole committee. So if that wasn't, it's about what happened in the meeting. And so I don't, I don't understand the talk about inaccurate because everybody, we talked about it and went over those minutes. But as to, I mean, announcing that things are happening and meetings that are happening, these are open meetings, these are open town meetings. In fact, so much so that the door has to be open at an open town meeting. So I'm being surprised that people attended an open town meeting and being upset about it, I don't understand. And you asked me to meet, but you didn't, I don't feel, I can check the emails, but it didn't, it was about communication moving forward. It wasn't about some bad thing that had happened.
I have the emails printed out.
Okay, great. And I said, because when I asked you to come to a meeting and you said, "Before we do that, I want to meet." And I said, "Okay." And I told you a meeting like a month or so ahead of time.
It's not what happened, and I have the emails to show it.
Okay, that's fine. And I were disagreeing because, and then I said, "Hey," and you said, "Do you want to meet?" You wanted to meet one-on-one, and I said I'd rather have a second. And in fact, the last communication was, if you were coming to the meeting, you would come ahead and we would meet before the meeting.
It was not the last communication we had. I responded to your email after that, that was at least a week and a half ago. If anybody would like clarification on the sequence of events, I do have those emails printed out. It's very clear that since I reached out in mid-May, it took multiple responses to even get Sarah to respond to me. I was very clear about my desire, why I wanted to meet, especially when she asked for clarification. I thought it was the mature thing to do, to try and meet with her one-on-one, ask Chair and Grant Development Director to talk about our roles. I made that very clear. I'm happy to show the information if it's helpful.
Okay, thank you. But you have a chance to talk. Now I'm gonna talk. And I didn't also, I don't really understand, I don't understand about the telling the people in the, "We just asked you to come update." And in fact, several people in this room were at those meetings. So there wasn't any ordering or bossing. And with the grant stuff, I said, "Hey, could you come do the grant?" And you said, "Do you want me to present on some other data?" And I said, "No, just bring a grant update." So I don't understand why that was surprising to bring a grant update. And we didn't have any questions about the grants because you were coming to update us. So the talk, the back-and-forth communication, I don't understand. And we requested, we requested a grant update. And then you said, "Do you need a grant update?" Or "Do you need something else?" And I said, "No, we want a grant update."
None of that last part happened, but
Well, no, that's, there are also the emails.
Want to respond to others.
Okay, so also, is this on the agenda?
Yes, it's part of discussion, that's why I put it discussion here.
Got it. And just to be very clear about my surprise, I understand that these are public meetings. In fact, I was excited to see other people there because I just thought they were interested in economic development and came to hear about the grants. I didn't realize that they had been there, asked to be there to ask me questions explicitly in the post on Nextdoor. And my frustration is not with town residents asking me questions, it's that I reached out twice before the meeting, exactly a week before and one day before, saying, "Could you let me know if you have any questions as a committee? I'd love to come prepared." That, either of those would have been great opportunities to tell me that it had been posted on Nextdoor and I could expect town residents to come and ask me about questions about grants specifically. Because none of the other agenda items for that meeting were posted about on Nextdoor. Just my grant update.
Because everybody really wanted to know about the grants. I apologize that you felt surprised by that, but I don't understand why having town citizens.
Steve? Can you just type in what you mean by that? I'm uncomfortable with the way you're saying.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I need to say something.
Are you gonna recognize him?
You have to recognize him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's part of the committee.
He hasn't been recognized by the Chair. My name come up? So I'm here, and I think I can throw some light on this. I'm sorry that I made her beginning days difficult too. But there was a predecessor. And that predecessor, how do we, how do I put this?
We need to be careful, I'm just gonna say, we need to be careful about talking about employees in public.
Oh, okay, all right.
So be careful about how you say things. Say it from your perspective, but we are not talking about other people.
I will not talk.
Okay, especially employees, that's actually against the law.
Even former employees.
Just be careful, Steve, please.
State employee for many years, and I understand what you say.
Yeah.
And this town doesn't always follow those.
Yes, we do.
Well, not the previous.
You mean the revolving doors of town administrators prior to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
But the, there was a predecessor, and the Need Act Committee began meeting, and I wouldn't say we got the blessing necessarily of this body, not the same makeup. Don't do that, don't please do...
What?
Don't, don't, probably abruptly.
So, we're, you're talking to the board, not, not to individuals.
Okay, so, we were, we were told that we would be able to work on economic development, and the group began to meet, and Joan and I run the only bed and breakfast in town now. So, at a certain point, a man came up to us, a guest in our house, and said, I'm not talking about anybody employed here, he came up and he said, "Oh, we've been hired to work on economic development in your town. Now, think about that for a minute, okay? We were meeting as an economic development committee, however advisory, and we stress that, don't we? And we find out that this consultant in the area, working on town's economic development. Now, we were surprised, and we told him that we were surprised, because we never heard of this, okay? And let me be clear, he never heard of us either. He never heard that Northfield had an economic advisory committee. So, we came back to the committee, and we talked about that. We talked about the fact that, what is the division of labor between the people on our committee and these consultants, working in the towns and the area too, on economic development? We didn't understand what was going on there, okay? And, and we brought it up, and the committee had, I think, a consensus about being unhappy with what happened there, that these consultants were never told about the fact that we existed.
So, I sat in on the initial meeting with Mass West.
No, 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 that's not what he's talking about.
This is a different...
Oh, is that the BSC ones? We were, we, before this committee was...
We have two different efforts going.
Before this committee was formed, before your committee was formed, the town was selected to participate in a pilot program with three, of three communities, and they were going to be working on a pilot project to talk about how to theoretically do economic development in small towns. It was not economic development in Northfield, or economic development projects in Northfield.
That's not just me and presented and stuff.
Well, this was a FERC run program, they were administering it, we were just simply participating in the work, and so they were going around to different communities. They did in fact hold a meeting. We held a meeting at the library.
You and Jinx were at the library meeting, I was there.
No.
Patricia was there before she got onto the committee.
Yes, that was a meeting held, I don't know if all of you...
That was that group in the basement of the library.
Yes, so that was a completely different study.
Jinx suggested multiple food trucks to the, I mean, there were several ideas that came up as a result of that one.
So that wasn't, they weren't hired to do economic development in Northfield, I just want to clarify that, that that study was, predates this committee.
That's not what he understood, and that's not what he said to us.
I, I don't know what he said to you, but...
So, exactly here, to the present situation here, we wanted to avoid the same situation with the new grant writer. We wanted to make sure that there was some kind of division of labor or communication between the committee and us. This doesn't sound familiar, I told you this.
I'm smiling because this is exactly what I just said. This is exactly what you told me in the hallway, and the concerning piece of it is that you specifically said to me, and I know this is correct, because I went to my phone and I wrote these notes down immediately after our conversation. You said to me, this was the strategy we decided we wanted to take to you, and it is once again astounding that a town committee comprised of volunteers who meet at most once a week, would think that the division of labor is arranged in such a way that the Grant Development Director, which is a full-time position, I am here four days of the week for 10 hours every day, would need to consult the committee before taking action. That is the part that makes no sense, it made no sense when you talked to me about it then, and it still makes sense.
I don't think that that was ever the feeling, we just wanted to be kept in the loop.
I never said that to you.
And we said those words, keep in the loop.
Provision this history here.
Okay.
This is not what I said to you, I said to you, we did not want to come into a collision course again.
Okay, and that's enough now, now I'm gonna speak. Okay? First of all, I was, shared a longer letter that Leslie had sent to the town administrator, detailing this stuff. I found it really disturbing, and I was, frankly, I was pissed, you know, when I read it. The fact that I, I called the consultants, and they, they didn't have kind words to say about the behavior of the committee, they said you were, this committee was aggressive to them, that they felt they were combative, and they were, you know, they said they hadn't experienced that, they were coming in to present what they had, and they felt like the committee was trying to shoot down their work.
I'm sorry, can I start, I'm saying, what consultants are we talking about here?
Mass West.
Mass West.
Mass West.
West Mass.
West Mass, we gotta just get that back there.
I called them and talked to them.
We've had very good, you're talking about me too?
I'm just talking to committee in general.
Alright, we, we had, we had very good conversations with them, Joan and myself, we told them about the history of economic development stuff that was going on, we were very excited about what the tasks they were doing. The business park is a, is a very exciting project, and we told them we wanted to support them.
Okay, I'm gonna finish, I'm gonna finish, and then we're done. Okay? My biggest concern is, we tout being an employer of choice, and I don't want employees feeling like this. We gotta, gotta work to not have, not, everybody, everybody has to work.
This goes...
And I, I support Leslie 100%.
Yep.
And as a result of that, like I said, I'm gonna cut off the conversation now, and in a couple meetings down the road, we'll, we'll invite you in again, and, you know, the Select Board, when we have more time, will address some of the issues, such as revisit the mission statement, revise the goals and objectives, maybe make some guidelines. We want things to be clear. I don't wanna, I don't want this happening again with any employee. The fact that, I knew there was some friction with Mallory, and we even talked about that at a meeting, that Mallory said, "I'm full-time, I can't wait for your committee to run things by you before I make a decision." I remember that at a Select Board meeting. We talked about something, and, no, I'm speaking. And she said, "I, I can't wait to talk to the, a meeting, a group that meets every couple weeks, to discuss something." So, so, like I said, I'm just, I'm very disturbed, and I actually will bring up the reappointment of the Economic Advisory Committee, and I will be voting, just to let you know, I'm voting not to reappoint anyone at this time until we've got another meeting, and we get some clear guidelines and make sure this doesn't happen again.
Like to add to our agenda on this topic for the next time, that we discuss appointment of a different Select Board representative on that committee.
Yeah? Okay. And I will make a motion right now. Do you want to make a motion to reappoint?
I thought we were gonna wait until we talk about it.
No, well, reappointments on the agenda.
Well, we don't have to act on it, but...
Well, we can, we can postpone.
I think, I think your, I think your message is really clear, Bernie, and I appreciate that.
I'm not gonna, yeah, I'm not voting to reappoint at this time. I, I have to, I was very disturbed, I was, I was friggin' pissed, to tell you the truth. I, you know, even Karen said, says I, you know, I was more pissed than she is most times, so...
That's saying something.
Yeah, and she gets, she's very, gets involved in things and gets, and takes things personal. So, I, I take this very personal, and I, I think we need to, I'm gonna, I'm, motion to postpone reappointments of the Economic Development Advisory Committee until we can meet again and have a discussion.
Second, it's at your discretion when you put it on the agenda too?
It is. All those in favor of postponing reappointments?
Aye.
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 I'm staying.
Okay.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. We'll be moving on now. Okay, we have the Northfield ambulance staffing, sorry it took so long, but...
Well, I appreciate that you all, that you all waited for this.
If you could've, you know, if you had the lead, we would put it...
Well, we've answered five calls since the start of the meeting.
I know, I know.
We have two trucks out.
We have two trucks out on the road doing calls, so...
Okay.
This is more your agenda item, I'm here if there's questions or anything that I can answer from ours. Andrea and the board already have their information that they need, I'm just here if there's any questions that you need to address.
No, Cayman volunteered to comment, I appreciate that.
Now, as of July 1st, we were looking at having three full-time paramedics.
Right.
That's in your budget.
So, there's a couple of discussions, there's a couple of things you have to decide so that we can move forward on that. I mean, obviously, you have Rebecca, who's on staff.
Yay!
And you now have Todd, who you've appointed to full-time, and he's on staff.
Yes.
So, what's left is a third position, and there's been some discussion about whether or not that's a full-time position as chief. And what, that's what the discussion we have to have is, are we advertising a chief full-time paramedic, or are you going to be going with a full-time paramedic and some sort of administrative chief? Those would be two separate people, and I've consulted with the department, I've consulted, there's been some discussion from the task force about this in the past.
Correct.
And some discussion when I was talking with the current administrative chief, when we were doing the budget back in the past, and so I just wanted to kind of lay that out, I kind of gave you the budget, and give you kind of the pros and cons, maybe, of going both ways, but the reason we need the Select Board to take direction on that now is because we really need to get that job out and advertised, because technically, we won't even have anybody in it as of July 1st.
We have two now, right?
Two full-timers, well, one starts July 1st, but he's essentially working full-time now.
Right, we did that earlier.
But that third position starts July 1st, plus we have to deal with whether or not it's advertised as a full-time paramedic-level chief position, because we really do want to get that person in as one way or the other as soon as July 1st hits, because somebody's in the budget, and we're leaving a gap there, where they could really use the support of getting that person, the full-time position filled now. So... Can you just clarify also the discussion that we had with the task force about overnight coverage as well? Correct, one of the problems has been that you, because you only had one full-time person, she couldn't work daytime and nighttime.
24/7?
That's...
24/7, 365.
Right, right, and so we have, had a couple who have stepped up and are working quite a bit, one of whom we've now recognized with an actual full-time position, but that's still only two people, and you usually take two on a truck, so you're usually calling someone, but the overnight has always been increasingly hard to staff. So, one of the ideas about having at least a third position is there would be some flexibility within the department for them to work on staffing at a different model, at a different level, you know, put all three time, three people on daytime all the time, that's just not gonna work. So, we want to get that third position staffed as quickly as possible, and the question has been, and it was always part of the question when we were doing the budget, and that's why we split it the way we did, as to whether or not it would be a chief position, because we could take the chief director's, the director's salary, and add it to a full-time position, and come up with probably what would be a fairly good chief full-time position. We have looked at those job descriptions, I've actually worked with Becca, who's the consultant, she's pulled those job descriptions, so we have some, some sense of that. So, the idea, basically, you have two options, you have full-time paramedic administrative chief, and you have full-time administrative chief paramedic, in other words, all wrapped in one. So again, we're working on that with the consultants, so I'm hoping that, you know, we, we just redid the job description, so they're pretty current. The pros of hiring a full-time paramedic chief is that they're very immersed in the department, so they're not removed from that, by just doing administrative work. They can determine, and then, as part of the job description, we can determine the number of administrative hours versus clinical hours, versus, you know, so we say, "Okay, you're administrative chief, you have five hours a week to do administration." But that allows them to come in, get the budget set, get the captains in order on what their roles and responsibilities are, start, start cross-training.
The billing and all of that.
Correct, you know, ordering supplies, who's in charge of medical, medicines, and all that, and that person is not only your administrator, but is actually on staff, on call, seeing what's happening, understanding the dynamic. So that's the pros of that position. Splitting them, theoretically, you get another person who's just doing the administrative work, but the con is they're not quite as involved in the day-to-day of the department going on on calls, working with the other paramedics, and being a hands-on part of that team in a different way than being removed sort of in an administrative capacity, which may even come in and do administrative work when there's not much staff going on in the building. So, they add a little bit of time, I suppose, to the paramedic position, but they lose that connection to the paramedic base, the people actually doing the work, day-to-day, by not being working with them on calls. So what we're really looking for is for the Select Board to kind of give direction on which way you guys want to go. I've spoken with Mark, who's currently doing administrative, I've spoken with members of the EMS staff, I've spoken with the consultants, to try and get a full sense. That's why I wanted to present to you the pros, the cons, and get a sense from the board if you have any questions. I know some of the preferences for some of those different entities, and whether that's relevant to you, or whether you want to hear those, that's fine, I'm willing to share those, but I didn't know what questions you guys might have right from the beginning here on that, that, that choice.
The cost between the two versus the one?
Well, we put 50,000, we put in the director's salary as a separate cost, if you took the paramedic-level salary and added that director's amount, you should have enough...
So there would be no, no economic difference between having the two versus the one?
That's, that's what we anticipated when we split, we split them for budgeting purposes, because we didn't know how it was gonna go.
Right.
But the idea was they could easily be combined to hire one person into that position.
Okay.
Yes, and you still have a, an assistant director's salary in there as well, for that position to continue. And this was all discussed with the task force too, that's how we came up with the model to begin with, and why the FY25 budget was developed the way it was developed. And it was discussed at Finance Committee to some extent, when we went through Finance Committee to talk, because this budget changed, and it, you know, obviously has these full-time positions in it, we were in the one year before, so it was pretty hard to discuss.
So we have to advertise for a full-time chief?
Correct, correct. That would be, we gotta go one way or the other, we gotta advertise, and then, the committee meets tomorrow, the task force meets tomorrow, so we will have the discussion based on what you guys come up with, and then I would like to advertise right away, so we can get that person onboard as quickly as possible.
Does the task force have an opinion about this, or are they just waiting for direction?
The task force went back and forth on the pros and cons, much like I've discussed with you. I think they felt because they're an employee in Northfield, they didn't, they weren't going to make that decision, because it is, right now, it is a Northfield department, the Select Board should make that decision.
Yeah.
But they understood the pros and cons. The report that came out from the last round of working with the consultant was very clear that one way or another, there needs to be more administrative support, hence the idea of incorporating a position, even if they're a paramedic, that they would also have some administrative duties, one way or another. We also have, have added $10,000 for like a secretarial administrative position, so it's not like this chief has to drop 20 hours into administration, they would have certainly as a chief or director, certain responsibilities, but actually, there's $10,619 for 520 hours a week, which is 10 hours a week. But actually, there's ten thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars for five hundred and twenty hours a week, which is ten hours a week, to assist them. So we built into this, even if you go with the chief full-time paramedic, an additional ten hours a week of administrative support for them to be able to pass certain tasks off. That might be taking email messages, answering phones, posting things, all the kinds of things. Processing bills.
Only for a combined, so that's only?
No, you have it for both, but we knew that if we combined it, we wanted to give it that support, that level of support as well specifically.
And then the department, as it is currently constructed, does it have an opinion, one way or the other?
They were leaning towards a chief who has clinical, combined position. Because they saw the advantage of that person being on the ground at the scene with them, working with them, to have a strong sense of the team and operating with them on the ground, the needs. So that was.
Currently, we're, we're a small department, we're twenty people, a little more than twenty. And we can't really lose one person to administrative role. Like, we, we need boots on the ground, staff in the trucks. Um, and we're at a pivotal growth point with the select board growing it out that we can, um, decide what you guys want for the future, um, and where you want us to build and grow.
Oh, and twenty, you're on task to triple your call volume from twenty-twenty?
Yeah, my first year as assistant chief, we did three hundred calls, and now we're, we're.
Probably gonna hit twelve hundred.
Yeah, if not more.
So that's four times the volume, so.
Okay.
Looking for a strong administrative team, some administrative support, but at the same time, somebody who's involved in the department, boots on the ground, um, working with them.
So question, how do you, how, uh, if we go that route, how do we see the overnight working?
I think that the departmental, that has to be structured with the new chief. And chief will have, and maybe it's rotating shifts, so nobody has just nights, but maybe everybody's picking up a night and they're rotating it. Um, I think that that, a good.
So that was discussed, I just want to make sure that was discussed as well.
A good chief with administrative abilities would be able to say, okay, guys, we need to figure this out. Maybe no one's taking nights all the time, maybe someone wants nights all the time, you never know. Um, I know some crazy people who like the overnight shift, but, um, but I think that that's something that you, going through the process of hiring an administrator, we have to make sure that they have some administrative ability and not just a paramedic. And I don't say that dismissively. What I'm saying is they bring more than that experience of being a paramedic and with some administrative capacity.
It's a similar question that the select board had four years ago, three years ago, when we were going through, looking at, you know, police chief retiring. Do you want to move to a chief who's only the chief and doesn't do road patrols? Do you want, you know, or do you need somebody who's actively, you know, who's there, involved in the community? Um, and, and we're at that point where we need to, we need the leadership to tell us which way we can best serve you guys.
So I, I can say, just to piggyback on David's earlier question, that the task force was more concerned about coming up with an appropriate financial model and an employment model in order to shore up the service that all of the towns rely on. They were really looking for a sustainable budget, and that's what the consultants helped us with. So more of the discussion was about the model, not about who should be in what role.
Not them choosing, yeah.
Yeah, the numbers work, so it's really about the title, so.
But that's how we came up with the numbers, was through that discussion.
But we left it so that it could go either way for discussion purposes.
Okay, so you want boots on the ground?
Yeah, and it's a new position with this new, you know, it's a new fully-vetted forty-hour-a-week full-time market position. In my role as assistant chief, it would be nice to have somebody who is doing both roles. Um, but, uh, I mean, no matter what the decision's made, we are a needed service. No one's gonna come in and cover the twelve hundred calls that we're doing, and we're gonna try our best with the group that we've got. But, um, however, however we can structure it is the best way that we can get it done.
Well, and it's, you, you guys have a good group, there's no question about that. The concern of the task force, which I think is shared by, by you as the whole department as well, is that there wasn't enough full-time support, right? And because you can only, especially overnight, you can only get staffing between twelve and eight by doing people who volunteer to be on-call. And that's not sustainable for the long haul with the call volume and the, and the group of towns who are participating in this regional task force. So just that's why I.
When you're building this new position, you know, you're always looking at, like, I have a great group of people, I love the people in my department. I can name each one individually, say, look, they'd be great, and how, this is, I love them, I want them for this position. But I'm looking at the department after I'm gone, after, you know, ten years from now, a hundred years from now, or whatever. This is a position that we are in the opportunity to create, and these are the roles and responsibilities we want for it. And these are the candidates that we can interview for it and see who's fit for the position.
Does the admin have any special, like, transcription he needs or something like that, is that a?
The admin, what is new that we haven't really used yet, is basically to help with offload some of the stuff. Right, right now, everything comes to the current administrative chief, and he delegates what he feels is necessary. Um, and otherwise takes it on himself. There's no delineation, his, his role is one role, and then he determines what the next move is.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, I maybe missed, wasn't clear. So I meant, when we're hiring a separate admin for ten hour, ten K, ten hours a week, is that a skilled, is that a E, is that person, does that person need to be EMT qualified, or is that?
No, we're talking more like a.
Officer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because of the billing, um, the amount of billing that.
There's a lot of paperwork, either submitting their bills, either dealing with vendors, you're just, the kinds of things that are non-medical, non, um, that's the, that's envisioned.
And currently, that's not like a position if I'm right.
No, you don't have anyone there.
The budget to.
Correct. That job description, where we have a draft and I'm working on with Becca, that would come back to you guys. Um, to be approved, and then we would go ahead and classify that for sure and then get that one out. Um, so part of that, we, the non-rush on that is, if we do hire a chief, they really should be involved in the creation of that, because they should know what should go into that job description. What role they think that person should play in the organization and what job tasks they would assign to that person. So otherwise, we're just speculating.
Sure.
So we'd like to get the other person on board first and then have that person be part of the process to create that job.
Yeah.
So are you voting on this tonight?
Yes.
Yep.
So we can advertise.
Somebody want to make a motion one way or the other, and we'll vote on it?
I move that we move the EMS staffing in the direction of a full-time paramedic slash administrative chief.
Second.
Hey, any other discussion?
I think that if that's what the department is asking for, that's what we should do.
Yeah, same here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for hanging out.
Guess we'll be looking for one person.
Yes.
Go find him.
That's right, get somebody interested. It's a tight network, you know people, right?
Everybody across the state, really.
Okay, next on the agenda, vote to establish a recreation donation account.
Correct. So, uh, recreation is expanding, as I'm sure you are all well aware, the work they're doing. Uh, they have a revolving account, which, um, just so you know, the revolving account is authorized every year at town meeting, and by law, it can hold up to twenty thousand, anything after that actually goes away. So they're very close on that. But the revolving account is a, is a money in, money out. So if your kids are.
Like fees and stuff like that?
Correct. If your kids buy T-shirts, they pay the fee, the money goes in there, they buy the T-shirt. It's even being used for the summer. They may actually come back and ask for a creation of a summer rec, rec revolving, because that one takes a bunch of money up right at the end of the fiscal year, which really messes with the July first date. So they're taking a ton of money in, but they haven't expended it yet, because the program's just starting. So we may actually go with another revolving to separate those. But it's got a cap, it's got a fiscal year limitation. Uh, donation accounts, and we have several already.
Yeah, we have one.
Fire donation, we have counsel agent donation, police tip, yes. We have a ton of donation accounts. Donation accounts by law are voted slot for. And this allows people who, for example, are going to, have kind of been going through gyrations. So if somebody says, we're gonna do this recreational activity, and somebody says, we're gonna sponsor it for a hundred dollars, we go through these sort of gyrations to make sure that a hundred dollars pays for that activity. Whereas if we put it in the donation account, then she's charging the bills for those activities to that donation account.
And the donation account survives the fiscal year?
Correct. And that's a huge piece of what we need.
And she's actually getting donations, so that's.
She is, she is.
She's been really busy.
You can't put a donation into a town-funded annual town meeting vote account. So it's not like we can go rec account, let's put the donations in it. When they're voted at town meeting, that's the budget.
You want a motion?
Yeah, this is a no-burner to me, you guys make a motion.
Uh, I move that we, uh, vote to establish a recreation donation account.
Pursuant to?
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
Second.
Thank you.
If anybody wants to see the law and have.
Any other discussion, or?
No, makes all the sense in the world.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks to Stacy.
Quite pleased.
And the rec.
We had a fall town meeting on here.
Yeah, I think there was discussion, and then we wanted to add it to the agenda, about whether or not you guys want to talk about creating the concept, I don't know if you have to pick the date today, but the idea was, if, there's been discussion about instituting a routine fall town meeting. Uh, this is done in many, many communities, because, um, because when you close out the fiscal year in July, often there's end-of-year matters, sometimes the bills crop up. Uh, but also, uh, things have been in the works, but they haven't come to ri, to ripe fruition by town meeting in May. And it might be by the end of the summer, all of a sudden, you're ready to do things that you need a town meeting vote, you need funding for. And now you're either holding something, whatever, to do that.
Well, mostly just because we always have special town, we, the last year, we've had a bunch of special town meetings, and people are frustrated because they don't know when it's coming up, even though we do give proper notice, but, you know, if they know that it's an occurring meeting.
Right, if it's happening, so six months out would be the first week or two of November.
Yep.
Which would be perfect timing for them to certify free cash and the enterprise funds. So if something came up with SURE, they could do a project, because they could vote it in November.
Perfect.
Because now they'd have more funding. But also, we would have a date to, to generate things, too. So for example, when we're in the middle of a bylaw change, but we couldn't get it through in May, we would know our deadline is November. So then those kinds of things would show up routinely at that time of the year.
And we, we have budgets, like the SURE has budget, the DPW has budget. Um, something extraordinary happens and their budget goes.
Six months in, you could take another vote on their certified.
You could take another vote and certify more.
On their certi, right, so, or, or any other change that needs to happen.
Well, you might have more free cash to work with, too, right?
Well, you wouldn't have any free cash until it's certified.
Right, that's what I mean, so then you would know.
And you may not, you don't want to spend it all.
No, 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 but.
Something were to come up, you would have it available.
Right.
I do, I do think having a fall town meeting, in my opinion, is, is a good idea, but.
Well, no, I just want to make sure that's the consensus.
It's like a yea or nay at this point.
And you will, if the date, maybe like, will be getting to the late summer, we'll know when the free, they, they, the, we admit.
Do we want to just set it, like, the fir, you know, the town meeting is like the first Monday in May or whatever it is?
The idea would be like the first ten days in November, right in the first ten days of November, before the holiday season really hits.
But depending on when we get certified.
Correct, we get a little bit of flexibility. Uh, I've talked with the finance team, we are on track. You know, we got certified last year in October, and we're pushing to do that again this year. So the idea is, so if we set that fall town meeting as a date, doesn't mean we can't have things that don't appropriate money, we can move money around.
Well, I make a motion that we go ahead and establish a fall town meeting for the first ten days of November, and we can decide on a date, a specific date later as the budget year unfolds. Um, but I would say, let's go ahead and do that now.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Chair, excuse me.
Yeah.
Who's the second on the recreation donation account? There we, thank you.
I think B did it, I seconded it.
Yeah. Tag team.
Okay.
So this one's just, uh, a short one, it's good news, the, um, FERCog. Um, so I'm on the finance committee. What came up was that they've had a banner year in terms of, um, grants, as the grant environment, as somebody put it, has been, they ended up taking in more money, FERCog did this year, than expected. So it's a one-off, but, um, the recommendation from the finance committee to the executive committee was to, um, find some sort of percentage of returning that money to the towns. And the executive committee agreed to that, and they did still, um, put some amount of money into the retirement account. So FERCog has a really good percentage on, uh, the retirement fund. And this just, uh, putting a little bit more in it, again, is, um, just makes it that much stronger of a, of a, of a financial situation.
I see we got just over sixteen thousand dollars.
Correct. And we also did just do a council meeting last week with just this one motion, so that we could get the money into this coming fiscal year as opposed to FY twenty-six.
Right, if they certified it after February, July first, it wouldn't show up for a whole other year.
Right, and then it would kind of be like an audit slash.
Unless you have this DOR recertifying free cash, which you can do.
Right, right, but we're like, let's get everybody together and get a financial quorum and get this done, so.
And just for FYI, the full assessment for fiscal twenty-four was twenty-six thousand, seven, sixteen. So essentially, you're paying for a full year for COG services, of which we heavily use, for ten thousand dollars, because we got sixteen of it back.
Yeah.
If it's not too long-winded, how was the calculation to derive that for the refund?
It is EQV valuation, census, population. So there's the formula.
Oh, that was on, that was in my packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how they, uh.
My laptop died.
Does it across the top, shows you the different calculation, the different components.
Okay.
Do you have a USB C, I have a cord?
No, I don't.
And it, and it lists each, each town.
Yes.
I saw it as I was scrolling through, but I didn't, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's how they do the assessment, so they did the same thing.
Can you just explain briefly EQV, is that useful?
That's equalized valuation of the town. Right, that's adding together.
Pardon me?
All the values of the town. So everything, once it's certified by the assessors, goes to the state, and they do equalized valuation. So they add, it's five hundred and seventeen million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred, so it's, it's adding together the entire value of the town. And they do it.
You can buy Northfield for five hundred million?
Well, it's, there's a, a formula, but it's equalized valuation, but essentially, yes, according to them.
According to somebody, yeah.
And what is, what is Irving, just for comparison?
Nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, but that's because this also includes personal property, and you've got first light over there.
Yeah, in both, in both towns.
Maybe it's only, it's a hundred and six, what, what's a hundred million, six hundred and thirty-five million for them.
Okay.
So anyway, that's your, uh, regional government at work, doing a good job. That's it?
Okay.
Just FYI.
All right, let's get to committee and board appointments. We have Jan Hurlieh to the Council on Aging.
Great.
Term expires twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Barbara Jock to the Regional Animal Control Advisory Committee with Andrea Larmas as alternate.
So we didn't put this on the, um.
Is that a year-long one?
Yeah.
That expires in June thirtieth?
June thirtieth, yeah.
Yeah.
Expiring June thirtieth twenty twenty-five.
That's, um, regional and it's.
I know, I, I, it was missed.
Does everybody?
It was missed during our appointments.
Yeah, that's the only reason.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second?
I did, I seconded.
Oh, you seconded, oh, okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm actually the chair of the committee, so.
Okay. Okay, six-thirty reappointments. I'll, I'll read them off, I'll motion each one, and just, I'll just need a second.
Yeah.
Motion to appoint Dennis Brennan as veteran grave officer, term expires six-thirty twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Laura, do I have to do these separate?
No.
No, okay, Laura Dubin and Lindsay McCarthy to the Community Preservation Committee, term expires six-thirty twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sarah Kearns to the Conservation Committee, Conservation Commission, term expires six-thirty twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, Jose Mardillo to the Agricultural Commission, term expires six-thirty twenty twenty-seven.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Andrew Vernon to the Stewardship Advisory Committee, term expires six-thirty twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for Victoria Luska to the Cultural Council, term expires six-thirty twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we got proposed agenda items.
I put a, I put a new one on the table because some of them were already in this meeting. So I took them off the top, otherwise, and I added the audit, an auditor, since we've got our auditor.
Oh, right.
And somebody mentioned the three-town meeting. When I get the, when I get the recap, I will, I will get it on the agenda. Because they will be re-mail, they'll be emailing me a recap of that meeting.
Okay.
So that, it'd be better if I had their recap, because I had to leave like ten minutes early.
Oh, shoot.
So I missed the last ten minutes, so I'd rather see the recap before we discuss it.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and what I think we should also just talk about is, because there's two agreements coming, is any-
Yeah.
And I'm sorry I couldn't be there.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah.
How dare you get sit?
I know, I'm sorry.
I left highway department priorities on there because Heath and I and Tom have been trying to get together to talk about the roads committee, setting up a date, but it may not be the July sixteenth meeting.
Well, and plus, what I asked Tom, and I'm going to ask you guys as part of the-
Sorry?
Who, proposed agenda, is that we talk about building maintenance in the position and how it's, how it's being filled.
Add that, too.
Yeah, because we'll need to get that hired, and I think we've had prior discussions over the years of proactive maintenance versus just responding to work orders.
And I wanted to add sometime to review the dangerous dog policy to make sure that we know how to do it right in the future.
Yeah, I've been rewriting that as a procedure, so I can put that on.
And there were some specific notes, I guess, on why it was overturned, and so make sure it-
Yep.
All the considerations.
Yes, and the AC, the animal control officer.
Wants my nose, actually.
Will, will consult on that as well.
So that you guys can run a follow-up.
And I will take, also, I will take that into the regional so that other towns can learn.
Once I forget it, I'll send it to you to review.
Yeah, please. The other thing I wanted to add was a procedure for emergency communication based on the nine-one-one being down, and the different messages on social media regarding which numbers to call, being, not syncing up with what was on the reverse nine-one-one.
So my thought is that from July, the fire team would be in, and maybe-
Then we can talk about training, too.
Right after it?
Yeah.
For the sort of discussion.
They've mentioned that at the FERCog thing I was at yesterday.
Oh.
Because you're talking the emergency system, you know, how you get information out. If we have triple E in Northfield, I mean, you really want to get that out, and you want people coming into Northfield from the other area towns, so you have to have a good communication system. You have to really coordinate with FERCog and that. But if we have confusion like we did with the nine-one-one, you know, we don't, we don't want people-
So we should add what you learned into that whole discussion as well, sounds like, yeah.
You just have to have it a little smoother when, you know, something like that happens.
Yeah.
Just was a lot of confusion on, you know, it's, I did see at the end on social media that they had a number for, to call for fire, a number to call for police, and a number to call for ambulance. I don't know if-
Also, the chiefs had not been contacted.
Right.
Regarding the reverse nine-one-one information.
So if you're going to have them call each one, they have to be manned. That phone has to be manned. So that's important, if we can't, you can't have somebody calling in an emergency and losing time because the phone's not manned.
We're trying to figure out which number you're supposed to call.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to waste time.
But I just want to make sure departmental-wise, too, that the emergency management director, this part of this procedure, would be reaching out to both EMS and police chief before-
So we'll pick out for the sixteenth.
Great, thank you.
I'll be clear within kind of like your agenda items.
Yeah, just to nail that, that was a good fire drill, so to speak.
Okay, that's it for that, I guess. Announcements, any announcements?
No.
Okay. No recognitions for service? Okay, we have a possible executive session. My motion, we go to executive session for contract negotiation, Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one-two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, not to return to open session.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote on that.
B, yes.
Bernie, yes?
Sarah, yes.
Heath, yes?
David, yes.
Okay, all yes. Okay, we're done.